First to vote, but we don't have a majority of the voting members, voting supervisors, pass the motion. Still need a majority to pass the motion.
What Mr. Killor suggested though was, under Roberts' rules of order, lacking a supervisor, whether me as chairman could cast the deciding vote.
I think under second class township code, you still need a majority.
Well, it's a second, so I mean...
Unless you're gonna change, change or rule the board, but it's already the vote.
Well, I mean...
We can just go home and one person can run the township if they want.
It would save money.
Yeah.
I mean, don't be sarcastic. You said not to be rude, now you're being sarcastic.
No, I'm with a board member, I'm with a board member. I'll never vote against it.
Well, I can hear you, I'm the same.
We had these budget that we'd advertised, and now there's two to.
But we made the motion, and now we have a next thing on the agenda to go to.
Yeah, and I'll go to it.
Okay.
But what I will say is this, I mean, this budget now has been advertised, so I've championed it, Pawnee created this budget, I championed, Steve championed it, we voted to advertise it.
What does that mean?
The two dissent votes would be, you guys have, I mean, do you have a, you know, we don't have 20 days to advertise, but we have to pass a budget by the end of the year. So I'm curious as to what your ideas are, Mr. Killor and Mr. Porter.
Joe, what was your idea?
If you don't wanna answer, that's...
Joe, when you and I were elected, when we were elected, we first went on this board, I, when we were first elected, Joe, when I first came on this board...
You watched as one of the supervisors walked off the dais, and the other two of us were up here, and no one else showed up. I sat there for two hours or an hour going through this thing, left and right, saying, hey, this is wrong, this is wrong, we're talking almost four years ago, and then I handed the mic to you, and I said, Joe, do you see anything wrong with the budget? And your words were, I don't see anything wrong. So your stance, as you championed for this township, as the champion here, has been just to go status quo. You've never come on anything. When we put the solicitor out for bid, we had bids come in much lower than where we're at now, where we could've saved on legal fees, and there is you vote to advertise to have the solicitor out for bid, and then when we get lower bids, you do nothing but maintain the same solicitor. So it just doesn't make any sense. I don't know what your champion, I understand you completely, I mean, I respect your opinion and everything like that, but we have the next thing on the agenda to go to, the next motion, and I just feel like that's where we need to go to. And I certainly respect your opinion as well, although I do not agree with you. And we will move to the next agenda item. However, to say that I've just been going along with a status quo, I think, especially in this year, would be incorrect, because the status quo would be to keep going as things have been and not have a tax. Certainly, you know, and again, I've said this several times, nobody wants to see a tax, I don't wanna see a tax, I don't wanna pay more than I have to right now, but I have to do what's best for the residents of this township. And I feel, you know, as my oath of office, I have to do that, and morally, I have to do that. So to keep the level of service where it is right now, for police, for fire, for EMS, for our office staff, I mean, again, and we will move on to the next agenda item, but I'm curious to see as, I'm curious to see what, you know, what you guys have in the works, if you feel that, you know, both of you guys voted against this budget.
You have a motion on the floor, it's undecided, now you have to open it up to the public.
We do not, there's no motion on the floor. Does it make sense?
Oh, I thought you made a motion, and I thought...
No.
Good young man, the like, the like.
Yeah, those are motions, I think the next motions are...
But isn't the following motion...
We have to have an answer by December 31st, are we having another meeting? We have to have a budget by December 31st.
We don't have the time to advertise a new budget.
We have to vote on the same budget again, so...
Does the township come to a screeching stop on December 31st at 11:59? And you talk about physically sound, Mr. Porter, I agree, you have questions. We're down to the wire, we're down to the wire. How much is this going to cost us to re-advertise it? How much is it gonna cost us for everything, turning fees, jerk, everybody in here, when I say everybody, to get this budget, whether it's the budget tonight, or the budget that's coming up that you'll present in January or on December 31st? What's this going to cost us? Whereas you could've gone through with this tonight, and as I said, lay out what you have and your concerns, you brought up here about the solicitors. I don't know what your solicitors are going to cost, but the bottom line is, you're down to where you're going. Gonna be like the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, not have a budget? My question, I wanted to bring up tonight, what money have we not received from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that our liquid fuel taxes, I don't know when they come in, to be very honest with you? Where do we have staying with our money that we get for salting and sinning our township roads, or our state roads that we maintain in the wintertime? What other things are we not going to get maybe from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania? We have school districts in the whole Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that are running out of money, they're gonna have to go far money. You only have $303,000 as of right now, you're projecting $306,000 for next year. Where are you gonna come up with the money? You're gonna go to the bank and draw out a note at the next command of interest? You're shaking your head no, Mr. Porter, where are you gonna pay the employees? Are they not gonna get their pay? If something breaks down, we have a snowstorm, who's gonna pay the bills? There's a whole lot of ramifications. I'm sorry, I agree that you need to look into things, but one of the things I asked, I asked a member of the board supervisors a question. I also asked somebody that works in the township that gets a salary, what kind of communications do we have? And I got the feeling that there is this, a zero. That's unacceptable. In other words, there's really no communications between the board, other than at a meeting. How did you feel tonight? I asked the question, how do you feel tonight? I've had no conversations, nobody has told me anything. I also asked at the township building, where do we stand? Have people come in here? We had three people, you mentioned, we called three people a week ago that said no to the tax, real estate tax. Bottom line is, where do we stand at right now? Who's gonna pay the bills? Where are you gonna get with only $303,000? That'll go like crazy. I don't agree with what you've done tonight.
Ron, it's...
And I think it's political suicide, believe me, because we might be the minority in this room tonight, so people are not here. The best way I can say is, if they don't show up, they agree with what you're doing. This hits the newspaper, I don't know what news media hit, but boy, this guy's been piping over here like crazy. So the bottom line is, I can see the front page of the daily local news tomorrow. Thank you.
Ron, to ask one of your questions, you asked something that you stated, what communicate, you mean the board communicating itself? Are you saying we haven't...
The board communicating amongst themselves.
We can't, there's sunshine laws, it's changed, I think, since you've been in office, there's sunshine laws in place where...
You cannot come to a conclusion, but there's no reason why that you can't call up these other two, three, four members on the board and say, hey, I'm in quarter, I really like it, can't talk, but I'm after reviewing this, I think I would like to vote for this budget. You didn't make a decision, you didn't make a, there's nothing wrong with discussing things. You can't just like, and make a motion in that behind the meeting without discussing it here.
I've been discussing for four years everything that I've been talking about, and there's, I would like to say to the folks here, you know, one of the things that I'm in favor of, you know, Pennsylvania is a limited referendum Commonwealth, but through home rule, which places like West Pikeville has done, you know, they put in, you know, home rule, it's like a local constitution in a way, if it's set up structurally right, and I am in favor of a home rule for the residents where you would be able to vote on things like this. This would be in your power, no board would be able to increase or decrease taxes unless that vote went through, but that takes, that takes a vote of the majority of the township to switch to a home rule, but I would be in favor of residents having that power. I think it's unfortunate that you don't, and all I can say is, when I campaigned, I specifically told everyone when I was running for office what platform I was on. I mean, I'm not, I didn't have my sister or anyone else write my campaign flyer, I wrote that myself, I put that in front of you, and I ran for office in that fashion. So I don't feel like I've misled anyone as far as where I stand, and if you attend any meeting, I've tried to expose everything, anything I can, going on with this township. I gave back my pay last year as a supervisor, I didn't take pay, I gave it back. When the secretary in the first year made a mistake as far as the going to a conference and made a mistake on my behalf, I gave back the township to $350 that that cost. I've done everything, I didn't take business cards, I've done everything to keep any expense on this township to low point. But I'm aware of things going on here that I know that this board just looks the other way on, and I don't think that's fair to the residents, and it's not financially wise, and if you continue to allow a board to stand up here and do that for this township, this is gonna become a very, very expensive place, because there's other things coming down the line, like stormwater issues that we have to pay for, and you're gonna have to pay for, and it's gonna become very expensive in these file field. This budget needs to be examined, and I'm for getting a budget passed as fast as we can, but it needs to be...
I mean, we're still on a spot where we can't move forward, I mean, this is a concern to me, and I respect your opinions, both of you, Chuck and Ed, but at the end of the day, we have a responsibility to pass a balanced budget, which we have in front of us, before the end of the year. That is our responsibility as elected officials. Is it the best budget in the world? Absolutely not. Are there areas for improvement? Absolutely, and we're working towards that. You know, we have, right now, a lot of stuff's in limbo, we have the road crew that we're negotiating with, the police contract is up next year, and we, you know, we're gonna work on that and work with them, and I'm sure they're more than willing to work with us to find areas where, you know, we can increase their service levels and what they get, while also decreasing the cost to the township. You know, I know that they're willing to work with us, so, I mean, while, yeah, you know, I'm not in favor of tax, and yes, I ran for office with saying I'm not in favor of a real estate tax, but, you know, over the past two years, it's been come clear, we can't function without it at this point. And that's not to say that we have to keep increasing it, I mean, you may get into the situation where we're gonna come here next year and ask for another two mils. My vote would be, you know, look at it next year, you know, this gets us to a point where we have a balanced budget, we can move forward, we can pay our employees, and we, again, we can move forward and spend the next year, full year, instead of starting in August, which our budget process, for those who don't know, don't attend meetings, we start in August, so this has been coming a long time, and this, we explored options, and this was the best we could come up with at this point. Again, is it perfect? No, but I'm absolutely in favor of if we get to a spot next year where we can say, listen, yeah, you know, we're in a better spot, we have more money in our rainy day fund, we can lower the mileage to a mil and a half, to a mil, not getting rid of it completely, but, you know, get those place, those areas, I mean, at this point, in my view, we don't have much of a choice but to move forward on this, and then we can spend the next year, a full year, evaluating the budget at every meeting, we can have special meetings if you want, and we can go line by line, in a public meeting, and understand the cost of everything, and see where we can save, where we can increase efficiencies. You know, I said at the last meeting, a lot of this will come from, if we put this tax in place, we can afford the township manager, which is something a lot of people have said we need, including our comprehensive plan that we just did over the last 18 months to two years. You know, this is clearly a spot where, you know, while we're spending money to hire on a new employee with salary and benefits, it's in a position where they can spend the day-to-day doing this work. You know, yes, we're not there day-to-day, we all have other jobs and other responsibilities that we do, and that's where a township manager, like almost every other township in this county has, runs the day-to-day, and brings stuff before us that can help save us money, write grants, you know, and finding efficiencies, but if we don't have a budget to move forward, then we're stuck, and that's not anywhere we need to be. So again, it's not perfect, it's not great, but it's a workable budget, and we can move forward, and, again, spend the next year, I'm fine with that, I can have a meeting a week if you want to go over the budget, or more, but we need to move forward, so I, you know, I don't know what other choice we have, there's nothing else presented to us, we don't have 20 days to advertise a new budget, and we don't have a new budget in front of us that's better than this one. So I, you know, and we can't go to the, we can't go and be the seat without a budget, it's just not possible for us as a second-class township, so we need to do something, and we need, I'd rather do it tonight, because, you know, yes, Christmas is coming up, New Year's, none of us wanna be here, none of you wanna be here on another day, another night, to debate this, when we don't legally have the days to even advertise a new budget. So, you know, if you guys have another suggestion for what we can do to have a balanced budget, to do a fiduciary responsibility as elected officials, I'm all ears.
Thanks, Steve, and just, I mean, we have other, other entities helping us as well. I mean, we, Steve and I sat down with DA Tom Hogan last week, and we were actually able to save, we're gonna be able to save a little bit with a vehicle, which the county is going to give Chester County for our chief, so we do not have to, we do not have to replace one of our police vehicles. So, you know, I think everybody's trying to work together to get this thing done, and I thank the county, and I thank Mr. Hogan for, for helping with that as well. Steve, I just, to reiterate, I agree with you 100%, I mean, we have to get this done, and I'm gonna remotion this again to see if it'll pass, because we really don't have any alternative. I'm making a motion to adopt resolution 2000, I'm sorry, making a motion to adopt the 2016 1124-15 budget that's presented.
Second.
Questions or comments? Scott.
Yes, LA Board Member, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, you've been doing the budget since August? So why haven't you two, who wanted to pass, why haven't you worked to reduce spending? So that we don't have to have a real estate tax?
I think we all have since August 17th.
Well, I don't think you have.
I can tell you that.
And I would tell you, secondly, regarding the district attorney's office, another issue when I was supervisor, you know what Anthony Sarcion said to me? If you can't stand the heat in the kitchen, get out.
Okay.
How disrespectful. Now, I have no respect for the district attorney's office.
Thank you, sir, that's from years ago.
It doesn't matter, it's the same...
I, I...
Nay.
Nay as well.
So, so is one of you gonna tell us what we can do to fund the government? I mean, I usually don't get this worked up, but we have a responsibility...
Reduce what?
To fund this government, I'm not talking to you, Mr. Scott, right now, I'm talking to two gentlemen to my left. I appreciate your vote for nay, and I understand it in the numbers, but you have to have some other option, we have to be funded for the next year. If we have to go in our rainy day fund, that's about two to three pay periods, and we're done, and then the police officers, the office staff, the road crew, won't even get us out.
It's my opinion you gotta go back into the budget, take a report.
But we don't have time to do that, Chuck.
There's money to be spent.
Not, not by the end of the year?
What, they're gonna come lock you up? We don't have an agreement.
We don't have an agreement, you could always, it could be reopened in January, but we have to, we have something by December 31st.
Of course you can't, you can't, we're cutting it.
You can cut that percent.
Steve, I ended up saying not cutting.
It says about...
Always a cutting, but you get it.
Or it could be open, it will be here.
I think it's...
The obligation that is, the code's...
I think it's, I think it's unfair to put Carol on the spot, but the budget can be reopened in January, if we do have, if the board so chooses to do that. So if we pass with three, it can be reopened, I mean, and again, just, it's baby steps, like this, we need to do this by the end of the year, and if you guys wanna reopen it, if you have three votes.
Joe, you put a key vote, and do you get your way? They said two no, and yes. That's what it is.
We will, we will move on to the agenda, there will be public participation at the
end for all those who wish to voice their opinion, that encourage all of you to stay and voice your opinion.
Is there any time, place, before the end of the year, that the other supervisor...
We're hoping, we haven't been able to get in contact with him, and I certainly would like to be able to do that, because obviously he would cast the deciding vote.
I'm gonna not vote for him.
All right, moving along, Solicitor Report.
Yeah, just in terms of Manchester Farms, it's pretty much the same update as the last one. The paving is complete, it should be great for growth for the winter, in terms of paving, I guess, it won't deal with what you had itself with last year, so it should be much simpler, spoke with Pawnee about where that should come out of in terms of the escrow agreements, our understanding that should come out of the escrow agreement, in terms of how it should be reimbursed and kind of pointed in from the first place, so that'll kind of go through. They're still waiting on the DEP approval for the basin number five, to make sure the attachment engineers agree, you recall that, that doesn't have to be done, that costs a significant cost, and they're waiting on that, that would be about a $10,000 savings, which ultimately, $10,000 left in escrow, so that would, it's pretty important. Otherwise, the legal descriptions are done, we're waiting on the, yeah, it's built, it could be done as well. They have a little bit of landscaping, I think, to do, that they wanna do it.
JP, so for dedication for Manchester Farms, or just basically wait for the DEP on the basin, or...
Yeah, the, and the, the, the biggest case is about, I don't know, the dates of that date, yeah.
So what is this?
So, and, and they haven't completed landscaping, that would be another punchless item, and I think there are a couple others, like minor punchless items, but DEP was the big one.
That's it, Solicitor's Report, legal issues?
No.
Police Department, the November Police Report is submitted, at the back, submitted is in the back for review. Public Works, same thing, reports are in the back. Fire Department, Westwood, Medina, reports in the back, would any of you guys like to speak? No. Planning Commission, Mr. Crook, anything for us tonight?
Yes, we had a planning commission meeting here at the beginning of the month. We had our three main items, PA Water and a township resident, Ms. Serpa, she came, she made a presentation that was made last time here about the fluoride in the water, we brought in the, some people higher up in PA Water, they pretty much, from my consensus, kind of agreed that the fluoride is not, is classified now from the EPA as a neurotoxin, and that we're going to try, as a group, to bring in the other townships that also use the public water in our area, and see if we can get enough consensus from our board and the other boards of other townships who use that water, and see about petitioning them to take that out. PA Water said it was part of their agreement from way back, that that's part of their contract that says they have to put it in there, even though they don't agree with its added cost and other things like that, but at the same time, it's a problem with people's health, and we're trying to see about getting other support from that, trying to see also about getting some more support from the county level, too.
Dennis, which municipalities have you reached out to?
PA Water's supposed to get back to us and give us a list of all of them that are hooked to that particular well or system, which is the CodeSco system, and so, we tried off the top of our head to figure out what those were, but we, you know, kind of fallen short, we're not quite sure, so we're depending upon them to get feedback to us. I'm sure the holidays isn't helping for going a little further right now, but they said that they would work with that, and we're gonna keep on to see if that takes place. We had Chatty Builders over in regards to the, it's called the Harpington property, we looked at what their suggestions of wanting to change certain things, we kind of got back with them and said, what's some of the reasons why it was the way it was, and looked at a number of other different things. They're still proceeding to go forward with it, and still looking at some minor changes. They wanted to change some of the blocking trail, and they said, no, that's kind of hooked up to the other property that was north of that, that that was an issue when that was brought forward, so that would hook the two together, and then it goes out and kind of block.
Dennis, in regard to the entrance there, that they were asking to be removed, did the board, the planning commission, were you okay with that, or...
No, we weren't okay with that, maybe the...
It was entrance, huh?
The cul-de-sac would be more than 1,000 feet long, which I think is, that's what our specifications are, it can't be any longer than 1,000.
Okay, so there'd be two entrances.
Yeah.
Did, I don't mean to pull Garth's name out, but did Garth remember anything with that development, as far as...
Yeah, Garth and John both were in on that, John Swab.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure about Jim Duro, I think he was one of the dependents around at that time, too, I'm not...
Okay.
Can't remember.
Was there any concerns that they mentioned, Dennis, at all, as far as...
No, we said that they would still have to do other things probably for the new stormwater management, even though they had some approvals before, we didn't see any particular final plan that had three supervisors' signatures on it, I think it's still being looked forward, but I don't know if it was, I know we had the letter from Mr. Pompo on some of the conditions and things like that.
So there's no final plan approval from years ago?
They say it is, I haven't seen any proof of it yet, we looked in the office a little bit.
So JP, if there's no final approval on that plan, then it's not, it's not like, I mean, years later, I mean, they don't, they really don't have anything?
They don't have a, that is, we'd have to see exactly what they have, they gotta show us what they have, I think that was my question, at the last one they came, the guy asked that question.
That was the, it was submitted to the county, I think it was, or wasn't, that's gotta be where the signatures are.
And they came with nothing, they didn't have...
They didn't have a overall plan that had the three signatures on it.
But they have, was it reported, do you know?
I don't know, they have the letter from Mr. Pompo saying what the final conditions were, that I vaguely remember saying it had been approved, but that's as far as I've seen anything. And then we went over the final issue, we went through, God, if I can remember what committed here, the implementation of the comprehensive plan, we were looking at that further and discussing that, it had more to do with the, a lot of the majority of the issues had to go back to what Steve mentioned earlier about having a township manage it, that would resolve a lot of the different other issues that are on those gold lists of implementation, that would fall under that, we thought a lot of that would come into that, the other had to do with just the continued, you know, funding for the different projects, it would be instrumental in that also. We went through the different ideas on that, it's probably a tough set of minutes to take on that, we went about two and a half hours in the whole meeting, but I thought things moved along pretty well on that, so I think that's pretty much all we did at the planning commission, so thank you.
So thank you. Did you ask the developer to come back or?
I think they, if they come back, it'd probably be scheduled for the board supervisors.
Obviously, they're going to approach us again for?
Yeah, I think so. They didn't, they say they were still on an option for them, you know. They thought they were going, they looked pretty good at them moving forward. They just wanted to see how our issues were with a couple of the different things.